The prayer today is, Heavenly Father, there's no storm that God won't carry us through, no bridge that God won't help you cross, no battle that God won't help you win. Trust God and never give up. Amen. None of them want to start a sermon?
On May 5th, I approved for Water Resources and executed the service contract agreement with Independent Diesel Service Incorporated to perform generator switchgear breakers repair at McFarland Wastewater Treatment Plant and other ATS-related repairs and services as needed at various locations within the department for a period of one year to be effective May 5th, 2025, in an amount not to exceed $10,000.
Thank you. Item two, the Commissioner's office has requested the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of April 8th, 2025.
Second?
Commissioner's office.
Hi.
Yes. Financials?
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Adrian Gordon from the Commissioner's Office. Today's financials include an appropriations transfer to the Sheriff for miscellaneous refunds, reimbursements, and web checks that were deposited into the general fund, a supplemental in the opioid settlement fund to cover an encumbrance to the Lake Jogga Recovery Center, there's a cash transfer from the Commissioner's Office to the Unemployment Rotary Fund. Among the encumbrances is travel encumbrances from the Auditor's Office to attend the County Auditors Association of Ohio Summer Conference, from the Common Police Court to attend the 2025 Ohio Chief Probation Officers Association Quarterly Training Conference, and from the Treasurer's Office to attend the County Treasurer's Association of Ohio Spring Conference. There's a formal contract deal from the Commissioner's Office to Schindler Elevator Corporation to install security cameras in the elevators at the Jogga County Office Building. Among the vouchers is $63,721.99 from the Commissioner's Office to Ohio State University for the county's second quarter 2025 program support payment, and $21,800 from maintenance to CT Consultants Incorporated for professional services related to the Safety Center Parking Lot Project.
Any questions or make that motion?
Just a second.
Was that a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Commissioner Stiller?
Hi.
Commissioner Stiller?
Hi.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you.
We'll see you later.
First Energy.
Thank you Commissioners, thanks for having us out. My name is Dave Connolly, I am your new liaison back to the company, local engagement specialist the title, but thank you for having us out today. I've taken over for Dean Hain, Dean Hain was previously your representative, I'll be taking over this spot in the regional external affairs. I remember some of you from a number of years ago, about four and a half when I used to cover Jogga County back then, so I'm looking forward to working with you all again. So thank you for the opportunity to come out today. Joining with me is Tim Pankpatana, Director of Operations, also in the audience is David Turner, Director of Customer Accounts and Local Engagement. Again, thank you for the opportunity to come out today to address some of the concerns that were raised from the letter the Commissioner sent to First Energy Ohio President Torrance Hinton regarding the Middlefield Service Center line shop. So again, I have a few comments I'll make and then like to open up to you if you still have some questions after that and go from there. So with this, to ensure resource management, to restore, and to ensure responsible resource management, the Illuminating Company plans to consolidate operations currently handled at the Middlefield Line Shop with our Concord Line Shop. The date for this consolidation remains under review and has not been established yet. So some key pieces here, over the past decade, First Energy and the Illuminating Company have invested significant funds and resources to strengthen the electric grid in Middlefield Jogga County. These improvements include the installation of smart meters and the addition of a new substation in 2012. They've helped prevent or minimize the impact of power outages for hundreds of customers and businesses in the area, especially during severe weather. The relocation of the workers from the Middlefield Line Shop to the Concord Line Shop will not impact our response time to outages and emergencies. Now our process for handling outages and emergencies in the Middlefield area will not change. The company's first responders to emergency situations are called trouble crews, and currently no trouble crews report out of the Middlefield Line Shop. When an emergency calls comes in, the closest trouble crew is dispatched, oftentimes from the Concord Line Shop. After trouble crews determine what work needs to be done, line crews are dispatched if additional repair is needed. This is our normal protocol for all of our line shops. The line crews currently assigned to the Middlefield Service Center will continue the same work that they do typically day-to-day, they just will start their days at the Concord Line Shop instead of the Middlefield one. We will continue to have line supervisors on-call and available to respond to emergencies. Now our distribution control center, engineering and work management teams will continue to support the Middlefield area in the same capacity that they currently provide. And then finally, we will continue to follow the electrical system inspection and maintenance requirements that the Ohio revise code calls for. So obviously, that's where we sit with it now. If you have any other additional questions, I'd like to open that up for you now.
So you're saying that that Middlefield doesn't, the crew that's at Middlefield does not respond to emergencies?
So Tim, I think I, being Director of Operations, I'll let you take that.
So if an emergency comes on, we get a call, we get the closest crew, most of the time we have our trouble shooters go there first to understand what's happening and then at the same time to isolate hazards as much as they can. When they determine what the issues are, then we do send our line crews from Middlefield if they are the closest one to correct the issue.
Right. The concern that I've had, you know, with this, is that there's so much industry in Middlefield, and that's happening during the day when that majority of that crew is doing upgrades, improvements, and different line work that they're doing. If there's something that happens, they're pretty much there, you know, and able to respond. We've got a traffic crash that hits a pole, line goes down, they're there. We're talking, you know, a lot of time that when Middlefield goes down, that's an enormous amount of dollars to those factories that they're committed to, to not have that service. You know, in addition to that is, you know, we have, you know, a dangerous situation with wires down, you know, look at the risk we're putting people into. You know, it's not a, I'm struggling with the fact that they've got a good location in the county with, you know, good representation. I've actually taken the time to go and talk to the guys there to just basically ask questions, you know, and say, you know, what does your day consist of? And I'll be honest with you, they do an incredible job for Jogga County, and I just don't see that that cost, that, I'm just looking at on the side of cost of what we're paying, what you are paying to have that service for this county. I just think that there's other areas that you probably could cut on before you take Jogga's service away, you know? And I'm just not going to agree with you that its timing is going to be the same, you know, because you've got Lake County that has, we're in 96,000 population, Lake County's going to be, what, 250,000 to 260,000 population with a lot, you know, lot more infrastructure, power, and everything else. So it always goes to population that's affected. And I'm just telling you, I just do not want to see Jogga County get short-changed in this. It's just not fair to us.
Absolutely. I appreciate that, I can trust that. As Dave stated, there will be no loss of service for the folks that are relocated. We'll still have work in and around the Middlefield area, so when there's an emergency, we're going to break down the crew that is the closest, where they can safely break down and respond to those emergencies.
And I get that that's great for a conversation, but, you know, you have theory here and you have reality here, and I just don't think we meet in the middle. I just think that we're suffering a huge loss for a small dollar to lose that, lose that, that ability. I just, I just, I've seen it too many times. I have a business in Middlefield, I talk to a lot of the businesses that are in Middlefield, and I can tell you that that unit that's in Middlefield has been incredibly responsive to the, to the, to the people in Middlefield, but not just in Middlefield, but across the county. Those guys are committed, they're true to this area, and the familiarity that they have with the, with the line system and all the power equipment that's in our county, you just don't recreate that, you know, overnight. I mean, these guys are like a fine-tuned machine, they've got all their, all their spare parts, all their, you know, everything within their yard, that these guys can respond like this? You know, and I'm sure you guys have been to their yard, but everything is, has got its place, very organized, very put together. The guys there are professional, they do a great job, you know?
Now, thank you for sharing that. Tim, can you follow more on the crew and how that change will be affected?
Yep. So, again, the work's going to stay the same, we're still going to have people around, in and around the shop. There's only, only five line workers currently outside at the Middlefield Service Center, and they're going to be relocated from a reporting standpoint to Concord. Again, nothing else is going to change, no loss of service, we'll set all the pieces apart, it's just the reporting location that's going to change.
But I mean, Concord's 30 minutes away from Middlefield, so if there is an emergency, they have to drive 30 minutes, so it seems like there's going to be at least a 30-minute delay for any time that there is an issue.
So we have our trouble crews that are around, around the service area, they don't just wait in the shop to get, get a call when there's an emergency, just like how we are right now.
When they're, we have a transformer that goes down, and they need to get a transformer. Right now, if one of those factories in Middlefield goes down and they need a transformer, they're five minutes away to go pick up that transformer and be back, you know, to be able to be back in and do an install. If we, if we don't have that yard there, where are they going to, where are they going to have to get parts? So I'm not buying that whole time thing, because there is an incredible amount of time that's going to be lost when going from point A to point B, just to gather parts and equipment. You can't, you can't sit there, you know, and be honest in this and say that that's not the case, because there's going to be a lot of extra time that we are going to be down from, you know, from determination of what part is needed to go and pick that up and to bring it back. And with the yard that they have, they've got a, they have just a conglomeration of all of that equipment right there, and it's just, it makes it so much more convenient, effective, and it serves our business community. You know, at the end of the day, we need to have our businesses protected, and it's just, we have an incredible amount of, of people that are, have dedicated their companies to our county, that have committed their service to you guys, providing them power. It's the least you could do is to maintain that, that position, you know? I understand, you know, shrinking down and doing what you need to do for, to run your company more effective and efficiently, but we have a very, very different scenario here with the amount of industry that is in that, that is in that town. It's, and we've got another building that's going up there, another million square feet. You know, I get it, they could have, you know, onsite generators or what have you. At the end of the day, it's about service and it's about what we need to provide. We shouldn't be going backwards in this, and I think that this is a huge step backwards. And I'm just passionate about it because I think that this is, this is a bad, bad move for our county.
I will add that, at least I realize that you guys are not the decision-makers likely on this, right? So I don't want to shoot the messenger, but we can fire off a few rounds perhaps, since you're here today.
I understand.
So changing gears a little bit, 2024 was the test year for First Energy, as far as rate-making goes, correct? And so when the PUCO is deciding First Energy's base distribution rates, what they're looking at is what your costs were in 2024, and that includes this Middlefield shop. So to the extent that you take that off your books, you save money, but you're still going to be basing your rates, the rates that we all pay as ratepayers, on 2024 cost. Do you have any response to that?
So the response, I mean, the rate case is currently in front of the PUCO, and ultimately that will go through that process. I don't have much more of a specifics that I can comment on that one, but that's where that sits.
But you understand my point, that your costs in, for that 2024 test year are based on including the Middlefield Service Shop. So if you eliminate those costs, that doesn't seem like a good, a good faith negotiation with the PUCO regarding what customers' rates should be.
Sure, and I do hear what you're saying, and obviously that will be part of that hearing, I would imagine. As not the decision-maker, I wouldn't have a direct effect on that, but...
Yeah, I mean, so those depositions are going on right now, and Mr. Hinton, I know, was deposed recently on that, and, I mean, one thing he admitted was that service would go down in Jogga County, the responsiveness as a result of that shop being taken away. He said that on record.
So in time, it's like, you know, we're going to get less service for higher electric rates, in time. And a question for the Middlefield Service Office, do you guys own it or do you rent it?
Currently own it.
We have Mayor Ben Garlick here, did you want to say anything, Mayor?
Yes.
From Middlefield.
Thanks for inviting me to the meeting today. As has been pointed out previously, time is money, we have a ton of industry, I was in the business in Middlefield, it's been a few years. Before they put the new power line substation in, we were down constantly, every time it rained, the power went out. Costs us thousands and thousands of dollars. Every time it went out, machines had to be restarted, re-burged, people stood around, paid labor that was unproductive. We've gotten past it a little bit with the new substation, which we appreciate. Now you're taking us a step backwards again. And I guess my point is not only we need a service there, we need a first responder team there. I was surprised to say nobody there could be the first one on site to diagnose, we had to wait for someone. So I'm asking for that in addition to keeping a few people there. The quicker the eyes see it, the better, quicker it gets diagnosed, quicker it gets resolved. And I'm asking you to not only do that, but having someone there to be the first guy there to come out, don't wait for a guy in Concord, come diagnose it and then tell us what's wrong. So I'm asking for additional support as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
You know, I think at the end of the day, what we need is...
Service has been an issue that has declined, in my opinion, over the years. I talked to Dean Hain about this prior to him being dismissed, whatever happened out of Donald Sizing. We had a response time on streetlights, used to be 72 hours, now it's four calls in 72 weeks. Certainly, it seems like First Energy's focus on service has become less a priority and more on financial gain and service. So I'm asking for that as well. It's cumbersome for us to deal with, and I just can't imagine if Jogga County doesn't warrant representation, it makes no sense, especially in Middlefield. You know, we have six of the 11 biggest employers in the county in Middlefield, and you're a half-mile away from most of them, and you're going to be 30 minutes away, and as Ralph said, the parks are there, it makes everything go so much better, so we're asking for support.
Thank you, Mayor, and as always, I'll be working as Dean's, as you as a public official, I am your liaison back to the company, so that connection is there. Tim, I think I've heard a couple times more about the, our trouble response, if we can kind of go through that, I know there, there's two pieces to it, so our trouble crews that go out originally and respond to it.
When we have an issue, we get a call in to our control center, they're within contact, either our trouble crew directly or the supervisors, and at times supervisors, if they're the closest, they are the first responder and they are one of our subject matter experts. When there's a call, trouble crews would go, what they would do, what's called troubleshooting and isolating if there's an asset, and then once they determine the issues, then the call goes in to the supervisor. If a crew and line crews needed, where you have to replace equipment, replace poles, transformers, then the calls would go into the supervisor and they would arrange for a crew to come in. If a Middlefield line crew is the closest and they're able to quote-unquote, what we call stop their current work, safely stop their current work, we would take them, if not, sometimes it could be crews from the other areas that will respond to emergencies.
I'll give you ten examples where they responded within about 15 minutes, got diagnosed and came back and fixed it. They turned a three-hour project in, from, it was a three-hour project, so a 100-foot project of a delay. That, you can't not equate the value of that game. The quicker people see what the issue is, the quicker response is, the quicker the resolution is, and I can tell you in industry, those are costing thousands and thousands of dollars. When I was the general manager of a company, I wanted to file lawsuits against percentage so badly for the money that I lost due to the fact that, in my mind, you didn't, you didn't maintain your infrastructure, every time the wind would blow, and I'd say that's been improved, but every time the wind would blow or rain, my power would blow, and it's costly, costly, costly. We just need that, we need that kind of service, we deserve it. We're a rich county, we pay a lot of rates for energy, Northfield Village, for example, pays about $40,000 a month for energy for streetlights, and we're, we warrant that kind of service. So I'm emotional and passionate about this as well, you saw response from industries that complained about the fact we're even considering this, we have a ton of retail, we service most of the surrounding area, probably a 40-mile radius for retail, 44,000 cars a day go down our main street, we deserve it. So to say, to thumb your nose at us, I understand.
I have a question, and that has to do with your decision to consolidate with the Concord office, is that going to include a reduction in staff?
There is no reduction in staff.
So if you're not reducing staff and you already own the building, how is this action really saving you money? I'm confused.
This is responsible resource management for First Energy. We're looking at everything, you know, not only, well, just resource management.
Yes, while the dollars and cents, we're obviously not the experts on that, we aren't the decision-maker where it was made, or these decisions are being made. It's still being planned, the date's not yet, I don't have the answer for you on that, I know that it's been reviewed, and the plan is to move over the consolidation.
You know, I think you need to look at this almost in a sense of like municipal fire departments, they have, one city has five stations, you know, spread throughout the, throughout just one municipality, just because of the fact of having the ability to respond, because they know that minutes matter, and, and we're taking like, this, this is, whether, you know, we want to believe this or not, you know, power, the power company is really a first responder type of business that deals with emergencies, and instead, we're basically, it's like we're shutting down, you know, a critical fire station that is serving the, the area. And when I say fires, it's true because of the fact of what the end result is in so many electrical situations with fires. I mean, our first responders need you, our factories need you, our residents need you, and I'm just telling you, we need to, we need to rethink this as a partnership of supporting Jogga County. If there's too much good and there's too many, too many good things that have come out of this, then why are we going backwards? I just don't, the dollars do not justify what the decision is, is moving towards.
We hear you, we hear you. From a first responder standpoint, still not going to change, it's going to be the way it is right now.
I think the Sheriff wanted to make a comment.
The problem that we're in is the response time. Right now, if we call for First Energy to come out, their standard answer is one to two hours. That's if you're not in storm mode, and as soon as it snows a little bit, or rains or the wind blows, you go into storm mode and we have no idea how long it's going to take. I can't believe that your response time is going to be the same for Concord as it would be for Middlefield, especially in the middle of the night when some of your employees live in Mesko or in Tromble County, it's much easier to go to Middlefield and get a truck than it would be to go to Concord, obviously. And you've always sold to us that you're going to send a supervisor out there to evaluate and then maybe make the scene safe, but typically that doesn't happen. We have to sit there, the fire departments have to sit there, we have to sit there, sometimes we close the road, and we have to wait. And, and the other thing is, there's many times when people's lives are in danger, if you've got wires on a, on a vehicle, if you've got, we've been to fires where the drip, or the, the line dropped and started the house on fire, we can't put the fire out because the lines are charged, and when you're sitting there for an hour, if you've ever called in a case of an emergency, minutes seem like hours. When you're sitting there waiting for minutes, it seems like when, when an ambulance has come into your house, it seems like it took them a half an hour when it really only took five minutes. And when we're sitting there with road closed and waiting for First Energy, we would love to be a partner with you in this, and when you pull the only station, the only sub, or garage out of the entire county, it's the only one in the county, we have to wait for Concord, which is on the edge of the county, but it's still in Concord, and when you're talking about running all the way down to Parkland or Troy or Middlefield, that's a long drive. And I truly think that it's going to affect us, your response time, quite frankly, is not good as it is, and now you're going to pull the only garage that you have in Jogga County out and move it up there, and like I said, I, you know, you've got employees that live on the outskirts in Tromble County and Portage County that are going to have to drive all the way to Lake County before they can respond. So I really think this is going to affect us from the emergency services for public safety, and you're responsible for that. When we call you, we expect you to come out, and I've said this every meeting that we've ever had with you guys, and Dave, you know this, that when you go into storm mode, it is very aggravating, because we, as first responders, I would rather have you say it's going to take a day to get out here, but when you say you're in storm mode and won't give us any kind of ETA, we have no idea whether we need to close the road officially, whether we're going to sit there and wait, you guys need to work more with public safety, and this, moving that yard out of Middlefield is not going to help.
Thank you for your comments, Sheriff, and one thing, you go back to my role here, you shared with Commissioners, Mayor, your other public officials, that's, that's what I'll do, and I'll continue and commit to work with you to, to work with that communication and be available for you in that way. The other piece is as far as response time, you know, Tim would be the experts on those things with the, with the groups, how we, how we work with our trouble group.
Just like I stated earlier, we have trouble crews on, you know, around the area, they don't just sit at a service center and wait, they're getting assigned work. When there's an emergency, they are the first responder, we have them on around the clock. We don't have to wait to call from home or anything like that, they're around the clock throughout the service territory, and if somebody's stuck on, let's say, an emergency call, we bring in a person from a different area, it's whoever's the closest for that emergency, especially if you have a down wire, and that has to be stated when you call, like, hey, we have a down wire, we have a bad situation, they're going to have to stop other non, non-critical, non-wired-down type of work and respond to that, that call.
And I've been to your, your communications center in, it's in Brexville?
Yes.
And the command center in Concord, and you've got, I don't know, probably millions of dollars worth of computers there and people sitting there, and you would think that you could give us some kind of ETA to figure out, I mean, those computers, I'm sure, are prioritizing those calls. You know, the other thing is that communications between the safety forces and First Energy has not been good. I can't remember the last time a representative was at a Commissioners meeting. Some of the old timers were at Commissioners meetings once every three months. You know, you talk about Doug and Mia Moore and some of those other ones, we knew them first. other ones, we knew them personally. Now, Dave, I hope that this is better. I mean, I've already had more communications with you since you've been back over here than I did with the last guy in the last year. So, you need to work with us. I think we need to work together. And I truly believe that moving that Middlefield site out is not going to be for the best for us.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Will they reconsider?
As of right now, the plan is to consolidate. Obviously, we'll share any information that we gained today with our management.
Okay. So the letter we sent to Mr. Hinton, it said that we're going to file a public comment with the, with FE's current base distribution rate case before the PUCO. If you fail to reconsider this, which it sounds like is the case, so I will go ahead, if that's all right with you gentlemen, and start working on those comments so we can file those with the PUCO.
That'd be good.
Understood. Thank you for the opportunity to come out today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please convey this strong message back to your superior.
Absolutely.
And show on the YouTube video.
Good morning.
This goes a little smoother.
I don't know.
No, we're all fired up now.
All right. Bring it. Shane Dejar with the engineers' office, here to present items five and six on the agenda. The county engineers' office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution 25-084 to order the pavement markings for various roads in Georgia County. This resolution requests the board to approve and execute the title sheet of specifications. Further, this resolution sets the bid opening using Bid Express at the county engineers' office on Friday, May 23, 2025, at 10:10 a.m. Notice of the bid opening will be advertised on May 8 and on the county's website.
Shane, how do you evaluate which roads to include in this?
Generally, we do the roads on a three-year cycle.
Okay.
So, first pass is, hasn't been done for two years, so it goes on the list. In the Amish communities, they tend to travel along the edge lines more frequently and wear them away faster. So some of those roads get striped every two years and sometimes even every year.
Oh, wow.
And then, any roads that we paved last year, they just get a paint. And this program is a poly paint. It's a much more durable paint. It's more expensive. So we paint them immediately after paving them, and then we re-stripe them with the poly paint following year. So, it's a county-wide evaluation, but it starts with some general principles, and then we evaluate to expedite repainting it. Or in some cases, they hold up longer than three years. Or if we know that we're going to improve a road next year, and the paint is, will survive one more winter, we'll take it off the list and not paint it until after we resurface it.
I was expecting you to say you have like an intern that just drives around the county.
Oh, it's an engineer, but no, it's carefully evaluated.
Yeah. No, there's like a real process you go through.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Item number six, the engineers' office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution 25-085 to order the pavement, placement of crack seal on various roads in Georgia County. This resolution requests the board approve and execute the title sheet of specifications. And further, this resolution sets the bid opening using Bid Express at the county engineers' office on Friday, May 23, at 10:15 a.m. And notice of the bid opening will be advertised on May 8 and on the county's website.
I'm with the crew.
Second.
Mr. Stiller.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Yep.
All good.
How many crack sealing machines do you have?
I think we have two rigs to do that, but the amount of crack sealing has gone up substantially, and our crews are committed to other maintenance projects. So, this serves better as a contracted service rather than doing it in-house this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're not going to yell at you.
This is my first time. Jennifer Jones, Georgia Trumbull Solid Waste District, I'm here to ask for the commissioners to approve the updated solid waste management plan. As you know, every five years, the EPA requires us to update, to do a complete review of all of our programs, assess our ability to handle the waste that is produced in Georgia County, as well as Trumbull County. Our district is both counties. And review all of the programs we offer and decide what our plans are for the next five to 15 years. This process is done through the policy committee. We have a policy committee with 15 members, including your representative, as well as representatives from businesses and public and municipalities and health departments. And it's a wide range of opinions. It takes us about 12 to 15 months to write the new plan. Here's a copy of it. It's about 300 pages. And we are now at the point where we are asking each municipality, each county, each township and village to look at the plan and approve it moving forward. And that will be our basis for our operations for the next five to 15 years.
One thing I thought was interesting going through, like the statistics, so I mean, Georgia County is half the size of Trumbull, but in most of the recycling categories, Georgia County has more pounds of recycling than Trumbull, except for the e-waste, which seems like that's mostly televisions, right?
Correct. Generally, yes. Georgia County's, not honestly surprising to me, but Georgia County has the same or sometimes even more tonnages in certain items. There are some items that are, for instance, appliances. Georgia County residents recycle a lot more appliances here. You have no scrap metal yards that will take items free on you.
Oh, I see.
So there's no place to take a fridge in Georgia County, other than us. Trumbull County, they have tons of scrap yards that do that. So they have other outlets to deal with that. So that's one of the reasons why appliances are so high in Georgia County. But one of the reasons electronics are not more, but about the same, but still, is because you tend to have thin TVs here. You have an affluent population. So you have less weight TVs to dispose of here, whereas in Trumbull County, there's large sections of poor and getting rid of those old 200-pound behemoths.
Yeah.
Tends to, it's one TV, but it weighs significantly more.
The ones that used to have like the wood around them?
Yes, console TVs. Yes, you still get a steady stream of console TVs.
Don't go there. We had one. One of those.
We regularly get them, at least one or two a week.
No kidding?
Still, yeah. We're hoping one day, they're not making them anymore. We're hoping all TVs eventually die out, but, because they're quite expensive to recycle. That's one of the, though chemicals are worse. But CRT TVs are one of our most expensive items to recycle because of the sheer volume of what we get. Georgia County tends to participate more because of their affluence statistically. Populations that have more financial means are more likely to recycle or use recycling programs. So, you generally have just as much as Trumbull County.
Yeah.
Even though you have half the population.
I thought that was interesting, though. I mean, I wondered if there wasn't that correlation.
Yes. Studies have shown for the UBS, that more access and more, the ability to have a car that would take you to a facility to be able to recycle, you know, that people recycle more if they have the time and the access.
So do you need 60% or 70% of all the communities of both counties?
I need 60% from each county.
Okay.
And I need the largest municipality in each county, so Chardin in Georgia County. And I need the commissioners for each county, the board of county commissioners. So those are my absolutes, or the county seat and the board.
How are you doing so far?
And then 60% of everybody else. So far, we received two responses. It's still quite early, and they're both yeses. Last, we've never had a plan that was not approved. If you do not approve it, if you were to choose to reject it, the EPA would write our plan. And we would have absolutely no say as to what they decide to fund and what they don't. This plan is our, not only is it our ability, lays out what we want to do, it's our legal ability to spend on things. So, there's a little bit of leeway, but we can't go out and start a whole new project if it's not in the plan. So, it's something that we need to at least have it in there. There are many things in the plan. We're hoping to do this. We have the potential to do that. It doesn't mean we're absolutely going to do it, but it's in there. So just in case we're able to do it, we can go ahead and do it. Because if we don't put it in there, we can't. We'd have to wait five more years and write it in the next plan. And we don't want the EPA to write our plan. It's never a good thing.
Keep this data out as much as we can.
Yes.
So I'll give you another, at least one thing off your checklist, I suppose. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
The plan.
Mr. Stiller.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning. How are you? Elaine Malkmackey, Community and Economic Development. Community and Economic Development is requesting the board grant permission to advertise to hold public hearing number two for the 2025 CDBG allocation program. We're going to hold that, we would like to hold that on Tuesday, May 20, at 10 a.m. And notice of the public hearing will be advertised on May 8 and on the county website.
Mr. Stiller.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
I did want to ask, for that public hearing, would you like me to have representatives? We'll be going over each of the projects. Would you like a representative from each applicant? Or we can just discuss what the applications are?
I think we can just discuss, but what is your preference? What do you suggest?
I believe Christie had said that we had, they had come in before.
From the very beginning, when I first started.
A long time ago.
All of the representatives would come in to talk about their projects. And then over the years, it's kind of like changed and evolved. So it's really up to your discretion as to whether you would like the representatives to come and talk about their projects or...
I mean, we do have information about them, but...
You know, I think we had made the decision, you know, years ago, as far as just you guys are handling those.
Okay.
To save them, you know, having the efforts of having to come in during work time to be able to do that. And then you guys had made that decision. That's why we ended up changing that, so.
Okay, okay. I wasn't sure how that started, and I heard that we'd done that differently, so.
Because there was a lot of, just, it was difficult sometimes to get them to be here at certain times. And we just kind of put the responsibility on economic development to do it.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Good morning.
Glenn from County Maintenance. This is to put a new chiller unit up at the annex. This one takes care of the auditors and part of the mailroom up there. A little bit of preventive maintenance. This unit's about 19 years old, 20 years old. So, last year we had a couple problems with it, but not, nothing major. So we're just trying to get ahead with stuff.
I'll make the motion to approve number nine.
Second.
Mr. Stiller.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Yes.
Y'all have a good day.
Thank you.
Good morning. Nick Goris, Water Resources. Today's just a contract maintenance form. An increase in an engineering agreement with Gatazkin Associates Incorporated for additional survey work. It's an increase of $5,000. Takes the total contract to $20,000 for 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Stiller.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Craig Swenson, Job and Family Services.
Jane Schultz, Job and Family Services.
How's everyone?
Good.
All right. The first action for 11 is to approve our biannual sub-grant agreement with the state. The sub-grant agreement enables us to receive federal funds that get passed through the state, then passed on to us to run our quadruple combined agency.
So this is probably a dumb question, but when I read that agreement, there are so many regulations for you guys to follow. And how do you keep track of all of those things?
Very carefully. Yeah, there is obviously a fellow attorney there, a ton of legalese in there. We are monitored closely by the state, you know, with all our actions that we do. We go through, in addition to just regular audits, we have state monitors that come in usually, if not annual, they try to do it annually, just to kind of ensure that we are doing things in compliance with those regulations. Thankfully, we actually just had them come through, and we did, we were pretty clean. So, thankfully, we've been able to do exactly that. And so, yeah, it isn't, not going to lie, it is a lot. But, you know, and also, we are supported, each one of our divisions. You know, Gina's got her folks at the state that she's able to consult with, staying with, you know, whether it's child support, whether it's workforce, whether it's our public assistance, we do have a lot of contacts. Just if we ever do have questions or concerns, or things that we're unsure about, they are available to us.
Yeah, like the monitors, the making sure you use the right software program to report your financials. How do you keep all this stuff?
Well, they, and they provide a lot of those resources to us. And you may not be aware, it's like, for example, we are not on the county network. We're on the state network.
Okay.
So, you know, in order to do the things that we do, we have to kind of be in line with what the state wants us to do.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve 11.
Second.
Mr. Stiller.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Yes.
Could we, are we going to go into executive? I was just going to suggest, I know Mary Ruth's here to talk about the Park Street House, and I was wondering if we could perhaps push that up before we go into executive, unless it's going to be fast.
I'm fine with that. Take a seat.
Did you want me to come over? I just didn't want you to have to stay through an executive session if you didn't have to. I was thinking on my land, I need my computer out. I've got so much I could be doing. So, you all are calling it the Park Street House, but I was hoping in the future it might be called CASA for Kids at Georgia County House. It's a magnificent location. It would serve the program. And I have had discussions with Judge Pashke about the possibility of utilizing the first-floor room for a visitation room when we need supervised visits. Because in the county right now, we have nothing other than, if Johnson Family Services has a case, but domestic relations cases and custody cases, hopefully, don't involve JFS. So we're on our own. And last year, just to give you all an idea, CASA served 71 children for Johnson Family Services and 70 for private custody cases. And domestic relations has more. These children are often caught in the middle between emotional brawls between the parents. And sometimes they need a supervised visitation center. They need parenting coaches, and they need other things to make it safe for the children. And we were willing to work with them to possibly get a grant so that Saturday's evenings, that one room could be utilized. I think it would serve the county as well as all of our children.
Okay. And you feel that the Park Street House would be sufficient for CASA's needs, big enough and all of that?
Absolutely. I think we would utilize other county buildings, whether it's a library or possibly this big room up here where we do huge trainings. But otherwise, I think, I'm finding that our program is doing more trainings, more often, with less people, because every CASA is required to do 12 hours of ongoing training. I also run currently the County Guarding Ed Lightem program. So any... from Rule 48, and I have to follow the list to do assignments for those people. I believe this year, we have appointed six times private attorneys, where the county juvenile court uses CASA for 90% of what we do.
When do you make the decision about whether to use a CASA versus a GAL?
I don't make that decision unless it's a very unsafe case, only twice have I asked the judge to please appoint an attorney, because we have a very volatile parent, and I just don't think it's safe to put a volunteer in that position. The courts recommend, I would say 90% of every, every time there's a JFS case, for sure, we're involved. Last year, we also had 38 juvenile delinquency cases involved, every time there's a juvenile unruly case involved, because the parent is charging the child, so you need somebody that can advocate for the child because the parent no longer can.
Well, I'm excited that that space will work for you guys, do we need to make a motion to...
Or just work with Linda?
Obviously, you have to get together with Glenn and Frank to make sure that the building is ready, I know Glenn had quite a few things he wanted to make sure, and then if you're trying to put together a secure space for these meetings, that might involve some physical changes to the space, so we'll set up a meeting.
Right, that might involve cameras in that particular room.
Does every county in the state of Ohio have a CASA program?
No, 66 out of the 88 counties have CASA programs, as a matter of fact, I'm working right now with Holmes County, I'm training some of their Amish, we are the only county, we're the only program in the United States that has Amish-trained CASAs, so when we have Amish cases, we have someone who understands their culture. I'm also working with the Amish Restoration Team for Trumbull County right now, we're just volunteering and going over there and helping them, and Lake County is inquiring and Ashtria County right now to add additional programs in the future.
Great.
Okay.
Thanks for coming in.
You're being touched, okay.
Item 12, we'll go into executive session, and we'll be in there.
We need a motion, right?
Yeah, we need a motion.
I'm making a motion.
Second.
Ms. Stoll. Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Second.
Ms. Stoll.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Can't go back from executive session, time check on that.
I have 10:36.
There is action from the executive session. So, I'll read the proposed motion.
Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the Board accept the disciplinary recommendation of the Director of Job and Family Services to suspend Michelle Moore, Social Services Supervisor 1, for eight hours, one working day without pay for violation of Section 3 of the Geogee County Job and Family Services Personnel Policy and Procedure Annual, and further approve and authorize the Board to execute the Order of Irreversible Reduction and Suspension in Voluntary Disciplinary Separation Form for RC 124.34 for eight hours, one working day.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Stoll. Ms. Brink. Aye.
Yes.
We're good.
There's only left one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, there's lines for each one.
It is, that's why I pointed it out.
Yeah, that's why I was like, I was looking to make sure, I know they're weird, sometimes they're all in black, sometimes they're all in black, it's like, I don't know, to see what they're doing. Can't be wrong with that item. All right, credit crew.
Okay. Item 13.
This is to approve and execute the certification request, the County Attorney requested the Board of Commissioners quarterly use of County Credit Rights pursuant to RC 301.27 for the year 2025, for quarters 1, 2, 3, and 4 for the County Engineers Office and the Department of Emergency Services.
So...
Second.
Ms. Stoll.
Aye.
Ms. Brink. Aye.
Yes. Okay, item 14, we already discussed the Park Street House through CASA, representative.
Do you want to do an executive session to consider this issue that we brought up this morning?
Yeah, I'd like to go into executive session and just clarify some things on this.
We're not gonna have any action on this, though, so should we do our public comment section now?
Sure.
At least I don't think so, right?
No, no action.
This is just an update.
Just to, yes.
So, let's, do you want to move into public comment?
We'll go into public comment now.
Anastasia Nicholas, Geogee Times Courier, can you talk about the Park Street House? Just what was the original plan of when you bought it, and just say more about it?
Well, the Park Street House is on the corner, on the northeast corner of the square, and we gained the house, it's a building, and one could look at it as we captured that property, it has a parking lot, it's next to our parking lot right now, and after the job trailers are out of there, we'll start planning some kind of configuration of merging the parking lots together, and it's always nice to have, and so far, the concept of the CASA moving in there, so courts, and that's about the size that they need, I think there's five to seven people works for CASA, so it's just to capture that corner and see, you know, maybe in 10 or 12 years, other Commissioners will knock the house down and do something else with it, but for now, we need that space, the square footage and parking around the courthouse.
Yeah, the parking's really valuable.
Yeah, and it makes it safer to go around the square, if one parks in the parking lot, this is like another year and a half, two years, once it's consolidated with our parking lot, then they can exit on Route 6, so maybe it alleviates some of the congestion around the square.
Yeah, I think there's an easement on a driveway that goes out on Route 6, right?
Yes.
So, that allows people, two ways to exit the parking lot.
Is it gonna be only for CASA?
At this time, that's the direction.
They'll take up the whole spot, and this will allow them to move out of 470 Center Street, so we don't, I mean, we just, right now, we have what, the Board of Elections, CASA, and the Sharton Senior Center there, is there anything?
Law Library, so...
Oh, the Law Library, so Law Library will move after the courthouse is done, Board of Elections will hopefully move after this, today, into this building, and...
Probation is there, too?
Oh, probation, and they'll also move into the courthouse.
They'll be in the courthouse.
Yeah, so we're working hard to vacate 470, that's our master plan since I got here, seven years ago, so...
We're getting there.
It just takes time.
Will it be, the parking will be for employees or the public, and how many extra spaces will there be?
There's, there's really no extra spaces, it's like 12 or 13 right now, but three of them are from the house on the east side, because that's, that's where we got the easement to exit the parking lot.
Is the, is the parking gonna be for employees only, or...
Well, state only.
Yeah, I think that's probably likely, though.
More than likely, yes. Any other comments? I make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, no, aren't we gonna go into executive?
Okay, so sorry.
It's okay.
I mean, I'll second that motion.
Make a motion.
I thought you wanted to go into executive.
This is the, considering a place for property for public purposes under RC 121.222.
Three Commissioners and the Executive Administrator.
We have to vote, right?
Yes.
Was there, do we have a motion? You made the motion.
I made a motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Stoll.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.